This conference will now be recorded.
The floor is yours, Mr. Gilbert.
Okay, well, I just wanted to call a meeting to order and we'll start with a roll call. Christina or Jolene?
Julie, Jolene, thank you. Trustee Gilbert?
Present.
Present. Trustee Lee Reader?
Present.
Aptis?
I am, no, I'm here.
You snuck in. Trustee Baines? Baines absent. Verandis?
Burns is.
Present. Thank you. Trustee Burns?
Here.
Burns, present. Trustee Jones? I see her. Present. Thank you. Tom?
All right, is Jay gone?
Not yet.
Okay. I missed that, okay. All right, well, next order of business is approval of the agenda. Anybody have any changes or comments?
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Moving on. Chris, you want to lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. Please join me. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United.
Of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, item 1.5, any conflicts of interest?
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to presentations, which there are none today. Outside vendors or anyone. Public comment, we do have a gentleman, Kevin McCray, would like to make a public comment. A portion of Mr. McCray's public comments will be covered under Gabe's Operations Managers' Report. Gabe's going to give a little presentation today, but Mr. McCray, because it's not a formal action, agenda item, it's just informational. You can go ahead and make your public comments here.
Thank you very much, can you hear and see me, please?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm having trouble hearing, but if you can hear me, that's fine. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Kevin McCray, I live on the Garden Highway. I've been here over 25 years since 1954, so that's maybe one way in which I am a stakeholder. I'm in the south approach, so I'm upstream past Powerline Road. I am an Aggie from UC Davis, I have a degree in plant science, specifically in agronomy, and have studied hydrology, for example. I currently work as a tax accountant. I sat on the board of the Natomas Basin Conservancy for over 10 years, I was appointed by the city council. And I have been a close friend of David Christofels for a long, long time. On the issue that I'm about to present, I have met with two prior, I'll call them general managers of RD 1000, both Jim Clifton and Paul DeBaro. But that may not have been the right approach, maybe I should have gone to the board, this is my first time having approached the board. And what I propose is the following, that you make maybe as a management practice for purposes of maintaining the interior canal so as to serve your mission of flood control, that if possible, you preserve native trees on one side of the canal, such as valley oaks or cottonwoods, ash or elder, as opposed to clearing all vegetation on both sides. And I'm not suggesting that you allow these perennials to actually grow into the canal, but rather to the side of the canal. And in doing so, what you've done is to allow the creation of forested habitat like used to occur here, and which is, you know, good in and of itself, but also for the animals that depend on it. In other words, here in the valley floor, we've lost something like 95% of the native vegetation. As one of the larger land managers, you can have a real impact on maintaining local native animal populations by preserving the habitat they depend on. I know the importance of these conveyance structures, that you must keep them free so that come big water events, they serve their purpose. I don't, I'm not sure that there's a conflict in doing this, I don't know if you have a policy to the contrary. That's all I have, I'm done, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to informational items. General Managers' Report, included in the GM's report, is a lot of information about the Natomas Levy Improvement Project. One thing to note is that project schedules may be delayed partially due to the Corps' inability and Safka's inability to find suitable borrow material. They're having a really difficult time identifying sources for that material. As of right now, we're still scheduling, as per the Corps' schedule, but borrow material has been pretty scarce and hard to come by, so that may push some of the schedules to slip, is what's reported in the GM report. Now, I'll take questions on the GM report.
I had a question, Kevin, are we no longer active with CSDA and their ledge? Because there's like no, I'm seeing all kinds of bills that would impact us going through and we haven't, I haven't seen anything, any alerts or anything on your, so I don't know if we're getting those notices anymore, or if they're just not bills that we, are we still active on that ledge committee?
Yeah, and we kind of rely on Dane Waddell to reach out. Every time that he feels that, you know, he wants our support on a bill coming through, he'll send us a note. I think the last one we got was, shoot, back in June or July from Dane asking specifically for our endorsement of that. But I can certainly include in future GM reports or, you know, other actions, all of the CSDA ledge action, if you'd like to see it.
It says like, well. Yeah, I just was saying, there's something of note, since we include the Safka in there and another, but after today, we won't need to, because it will be done today, but that's all I had, thanks.
What'll be done today, the session?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, future ones, Chris, if you'd like to see that information, it's more, I'm more than willing to throw it in here, so everybody can see it. Sometimes if there's a call for action, though, it may be an action item and not in the GM report, right? So if there's a endorsement letter, then we'll do that. Also, some of the policies, if you've had a chance to read through them, that we'll talk on item 6.1. There is a process for, you know, endorsing and doing, you know, legislative work that's proposed, like CSDA's template, obviously, that allows some authority to kind of respond quicker than full board authority. And so, you know, that's something to consider down the road, so if there is something that, you know, is urgent, we can send a letter of support on behalf of the district without waiting for formal board action like we currently do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, any other questions on the General Managers' Report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to here, onto Operations Managers' Report. So Gabe put together some fantastic pictures in this report on some trash cleanup work that we participated in with a group along Garden Highway. Did that on a Saturday, our crews came in and helped pick up trash after the volunteers gathered it and placed it on the roadway. Also, it's kind of distorted picture because of the way it's formatted, but been doing a lot of work on the trash rack, lower guide replacements at Plant 8. So really implementing that, that increased maintenance level that was approved in the budget for this year. You know, really trying to get after some deferred maintenance. And then lastly, and I'll turn it over to Gabe here in a minute, but we had our aquatic vegetation application done, and so Gabe put together a little PowerPoint that I'd like him to share with you all. And so, Gabe? You're on mute, Gabe?
Sorry about that. Good morning, yes, we had a company by the name of Water Works come out to the district performing treatment. It was mainly for primrose, it's been quite some time since the district actually got into the water and actually made a treatment on the primrose, so it's kind of, or sort of got out of control a little bit. So we had to have a company come in and kind of help us out, we didn't have the staffing to perform the treatment ourselves. So we treated the main drain from Garden Highway to Interstate 80, Fisherman's Lake, West drainage canal, East drainage canal, and the North drainage canal. The North branch canal being one of the main canals that Natomas Mutual was having an issue with on vegetation growth, so we made it a point to really put some emphasis on that portion. So our primrose is a perennial plant that stands direct along the shoreline, but also forms long runners that creep across wet soil or flow across our surface. Create, or drainage flows, they basically form a mat that also accumulates sediment, so it's really hard to push water through certain drainage channels if this is present. During pump plant operation, our primrose will form a blanket of the trash rack and screens to prevent water discharge. A lot of our trash racks, when this actually forms a blanket, it'll basically just keep spinning and actually go into almost like a rug. And it's, we end up having to get a dumpster out there and on the back of it, it becomes quite cumbersome. So yeah, reduction of water criminals, facilitate water prevents as relates to the operational needs of Natomas Mutual Water Company, so not only helping us with our water company as well. So this is a picture on the left upper of the, they actually had to use an airboat because due to the height of the primrose, they couldn't, essentially couldn't get a boat in there. So they used the airboat to facilitate the treatment. It actually worked out pretty good, as you can see in the picture, that primrose is about four feet tall. So even with this treatment, it's not going to completely kill the entire plant, but it's going to reduce, reduce the height of it, and it'll kill horses, but just not, obviously four foot tall is not going to do everything. But I think with additional treatments, we can facilitate the, reduce the growth. On the right, right lower, it's a little J boat in there. Some small stuff, he was actually, he basically had a spray from the boat. A vehicle would come in, fill his tank when needed. So the other side of the mixture that we came up with, we worked with Stephen Berkholder and a gentleman named Chris Newtren, it was a glass of paint, MSO, and Weathermaster. The treatment was intended to have a 70% termination rate. We went out there, we've been out there a few times and did some inspections, it's dying out pretty good. I would expect within the next few weeks, we can get the full effect of the treatment and see how it worked out. Basically, also, I want to mention that we flew over with a drone, all of these canals in Amphitram's Lake to do a pre-treatment footage, and I think the next week, week and a half, we're going to fly over again to see post-treatment, just kind of see a before and after effect. So hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll have that video footage for it. Yeah, so like I mentioned, we'll gather data, and there are certain things that I've seen during the treatment that we can improve on. So we'll actually take that and we'll see, we'll talk about it with the vendor and see what we can come up with. Mid-October is the next treatment, that would be for coontail. In order for us to treat coontail, which is direct water injection, we had to remove the primrose first. We wouldn't be able to get in the water and do the direct injection the way the primrose worked, so we had to get rid of the primrose first. So hopefully October, mid-October, I'll work with the water company to make sure it works for them, and we'll do a coontail treatment. Coontail's, it's a really submerged, submerged, real late weed, often it's basically a stringy aquatic weed that gets wrapped up in the screens as well, it's probably, it's just as bad as primrose, but you can't see it. So it's, you don't really see it coming as you start popping, it's not a good weed. Yeah, it prevents water discharge as well. So moving forward, it's essential to perform effective treatments at specific times, that's the key right there. We have to make sure we treat this weed and the plant at a certain time, so it doesn't get out of control, right? And that's what happened the last six to eight months, it just progressively got bigger and bigger and bigger. And before it, it was going to suffocate everything and cause problems everywhere. So I'll make sure that we, moving forward, we'll treat at the right times and in the right ways.
All right, Gabe, thank you, and just for reminder, our contract with the applicator was roughly $54,000 to do that first treatment?
Yes.
Yeah, so about $54,000, and we worked with them to come in and put the boats in and treat all those canals. And so we're hopeful, and like Gabe mentioned, he has pre and post treatment footage, we'll get some more post footage once we start seeing the kill, so to speak, of the aquatic vegetation, and then we'll share that back with the board again, if you're interested. So really great work, and then the fall treatment obviously is important as well to prevent the growth in the spring, and that's kind of what we've inherited the last couple of years, is this growing problem, and certainly don't want to see pictures of, you know, four foot tall primros again. And so, you know, appreciate the board's acknowledgement of this issue and increasing the budget this year to try to get a handle on this. I know the community's been asking for this too, so hopefully we can start showing some really good results. Any questions for Gabe on the Operations Managers' Report?
Yeah, I have some questions.
Yeah, Nick.
So Gabe, thanks, very thorough report, and I appreciate having the photographs, it's always helpful to get a visual, certainly, so appreciate that. Some questions on kind of the aquatic vegetation management side of things. I know in the past, out in the Natom, the NEM deck, I've seen various aquatic vegetation control methods, including spraying, and then also actual veg removal. I assume that just physical veg removal is just cost prohibitive just because of the amount of time and the equipment that's needed to do that? Is that, is that a correct assumption?
Yeah, that is definitely correct. When we can get to, a lot of stuff that we treated during this treatment, it was, we couldn't get to it physically with the equipment. But actually, a lot of the places that we could, a lot of the drainage channels that we physically get to, I mean, meeting with the longage or the, you know, the normal size excavator, we would remove it. But this was more or less, we couldn't actually physically reach the apparatus. And if we were to rent a larger excavator, let's say with a 75 foot speed, that would be very, very expensive, so this was the alternative route, so yeah, you're correct. It's just reach, cost, and that was, that's what it boiled down to.
Okay, yeah, I know out here on the NEM deck, I've seen them certainly with an excavator, but also with kind of a big aluminum boat with some sort of paddle device in the front that just kind of, again, pretty significant effort. Okay, so kind of going back to Mr. McCray's comments early on, you know, certainly from my perspective, you know, you know, our agency and the scope of authority that we have and our role as a large land manager certainly been an advocate for a multi-benefit approach. And certainly, his points are well taken. I don't think that it's anything we've talked about recently in terms of not only efforts to engage in tree plantings, I know we had talked about that in the, in the past in terms of identifying perhaps target areas where it might make the most sense and wouldn't impede our, you know, O&amp;M activities and our core mission of, you know, providing flood control. And in the context also of providing public access to these areas, sort of recognizing the increasingly urban nature of our of our district, so maybe Kevin, can you, can you comment on that? Or maybe it's something that should be brought back up in the Operations Committee? But I certainly think that it's a worthwhile issue to discuss further.
Yeah, so there have been, in regards to trees, yeah, there in the 70s, 80s, 90s, you know, I would say a lot of water purveyors and conveyance facilities, it was kind of scorched earth mentality, you know, keep it completely weed-free, tree-free, you have less maintenance issues with that. But obviously, that opinion's changed, and we're open to doing some of that stuff, Nick. And we've worked with a few developers on proposed projects about, you know, landscaping along the edges of the levee right away, and looking at impacts for that, and making sure any potential maintenance impacts are covered by a CFD or something, so it's not borne by the district's cost moving forward. But we certainly recognize the benefit of doing that, and if this is something we want to address in operations, we could certainly do that, Nick, tee it up and maybe look at what we could do if we wanted to do a tree planting program in coordination with TMBC or something like that.
Yeah, and I think kind of the timing is appropriate, given the fact that we're looking at some sort of a potential assessment, you know, sometime in the future, that maybe one of those components should be looking at providing O&amp;M funding for maintenance, because I agree with you in terms of new development areas, but those are less and less so, and the opportunities to, you know, roll into a maintenance, CFD, O&amp;M obligations related to, you know, maintaining trees along canals and drainage ways, I think is probably pretty finite. But it may be worth a line item in this proposal to go out with whatever fee proposal we're going to go with to get public reaction to that, but I think there is an opportunity to do that. The scope of which I think it would be appropriate for the Operations Committee to discuss. But, you know, again, there should be a community dialogue, if the community values, you know, investment in what Mr. McCray is setting forth, I mean, it's just somebody's got to pay for it. And so if people are, you know, engaged and willing to, you know, consider it, then I think it should be an item on the table as it relates to that, so. All right, that's it, thanks.
All right, sounds good, thanks, Nick. Any other questions for Gabe on the operations, yeah, Deborah, go ahead.
I just wanted to offer that when the Operations Committee considers this, perhaps the possibility of a collaboration with the Tree Foundation should be on the table as well.
Okay, I don't have this on our work plan that we discussed for last year. I can certainly add it into the work plan for this year, if that's the pleasure of the board. And then, you know, place whatever appropriate priority to doing so. But yeah, I'll certainly add that, if that's the pleasure of the board, to our work list and get an Operations Committee set up, you know, for initial discussion, at least.
This is Chris, I would hope that we look at, look at the logistics of planting or putting trees and developing a policy before we then start going out and asking, because they've already planted hundreds of trees out there at Fisherman Lake, some of them actually are in the way of our roads. So if you wanted to go out and look at that, but I would rather adopt the policy before we start going and talk, you know, NGOs on having them pay for the trees, if that's the case. Which brings up the case, Gabe, there was an emergency tree trimming and we paid for what? I didn't see any of that in last month's or this month's operations report, what was that emergency tree trimming?
Yeah, Chris, we have a tree that was next to the mechanic shop, and during one of the windstorms, we had multiple good-sized plants come down on the shop and down on a few pieces of equipment, wrecking a machine. The tree was just, it was dead. It was another big windstorm, about three, when it came down on the shop, it would destroy the shop. We had, we had to remove it. I didn't want it, I just didn't want to damage the shop and or the equipment that we parked near that tree. I didn't want to take that chance.
Thank you, I just wasn't sure if that was somewhere on the house. And can we, Kevin, I'm going to push again, there have been two separate fires over by our transformer, and not less than, not even 50 feet away from it, over there on Transformer. So I'm going to keep pushing to get that vegetation cleared around our transformer, so we don't have potential for fire. So there were underbrush fires created, I'm not sure by who, but so I'd like for us to put that as a priority, if we can, to make sure we don't have problems with our transformer there on Plant 1A.
Right here by Boat Works, right?
Right behind Boat Works, it's a fire hazard waiting to happen.
Yeah, and we'll, I know CableCom was in wanting some access yesterday down there to do some tree trimming work, but again, it's this whole, whose property is it? But if, we can certainly go in and remove as much vegetation as we can. Last year, we did do a lot of trees limbing along Boat Works property on our property line, and it was causing damage to their building, and so we trimmed a lot of that back. But yeah, certainly, Gabe will put it on his list to go investigate and.
Yeah, no, it's the under, right behind the transformer where the homeless are camping in the raspberries and stuff, so. But that catching fire and impacting the transformer, thank you.
Yeah, I have had numerous calls with Harris's office, Councilmember Harris's office, about fires on levees and trying to coordinate, you know, a response. They've had a few fires over in American River as well, and it's literally, you know, these encampments are, they pose a significant risk for fire and flood. And we're all struggling with it, so, yeah, we'll look at this one specifically, Chris, and try to get as much of that vegetation out as we can.
Chris, just FYI, I've been working with Smod about that area. They are coordinating with them to do, we're going to do some removal, and then they're also going to do some removal at the same time, so I'll follow up with Smod and make sure we get that taken care of.
Thank you.
So can I just add on this discussion at the Operations Committee on this tree issue? Yeah, I agree with Chris, I mean, we're going to need to identify the scope and impact of what we're talking about. So I think there needs to be at least an initial discussion that kind of brainstorms what this would mean and what next steps would be advisable or not, so, just to be clear.
Sounds good. And Chris, you are on the Operations Committee, so that'll, will help steer that discussion when we schedule that Ops meeting. All right, thank you. Moving on to item 4.3, General Counsel Report, Scott?
Good morning, all board members, to speak with you. I've had very little activity with the district in the last month. Did participate in the Executive Committee meeting, and that led to the closed session, which is scheduled for today. Rebecca Smith has been processing some documents on behalf of the district, but she was not able to join us this morning. So nothing very significant or noteworthy to report, we look forward to working with you in closed session today.
I can add, one of the items that Rebecca is working on is, if some of you may remember, last year, there was consideration to take over a portion of Lone Tree Canal and be gifted, not gifted, purchase for a penny or something, the property that's being used for mitigation purposes for the development out there. So Rebecca and the development attorneys are crafting up some transfer language or something like that. When that is finished, and when the developer's ready, I'll return to the board for consideration of taking over that property. Okay, on to consent calendar, any items that need to be discussed or informed from consent?
I'll move approval of consent.
I'll second.
Motion by Aptis, second by Burns. Jolene, would you take role?
Yes, trustee Gilbert?
Yes.
Gilbert, aye. Lee Reader?
Aye.
Lee Reader, aye. Aptis?
Aye.
Aptis, aye. Baines is absent. Verandis?
Verandis, aye.
Verandis, aye. Burns?
Aye.
Burns, aye. Jones?
Aye.
Jones, aye. Consent calendar is approved.
Thank you, Jolene. On to item 6.1, so we can spend as much time as you'd like, or as or as little time as you'd like on the policies. But my effort over the last month has been to put our language into the draft policies that are before you today. Inevitably, there are errors in there. I, you know, I've already found a couple. Christina found a couple of, like, some copy and paste stuff. But I wanted to get this into your hands to kind of see if you're comfortable with these policies. So these are pretty much out of CSDA's manual. There are a couple of policies in their manual in these two sections that do not apply to us, like naming parks and things like that. So I haven't included those because I don't anticipate us doing any or needing that policy in our handbook. So I'd like to, obviously, this isn't up for adoption today. We'd do that at a later meeting when we're ready. So I think that if you guys want to take this and provide comments back to me or red lines or anything back to me over the next 30 days or so, I'll I'll put that away. I'll start drafting on this and I'll start working on the other section. I've already started on the two remaining sections, 3,000 and 4,000, which are personnel and board. And in October, I would give you the draft set of sections 3,000 and 4,000, then potentially compile all of them together in a draft form after receiving your comments in November and then potentially look at a December adoption of the policies. So I still need to, some of these sections add in some of our unique district policies that are, you know, only applicable to us. There aren't probably more than a handful of those and finding out what sections they go into. But yeah, the policy manual from CSDA, you can tell that obviously multiple people contributed to creating those documents. So format's different, even bullet points and numbering sequences different in some of them. So trying to, I'll put it all into one document and get that all figured, you know, lined up. So they all look the same, though, all the same indents. But copying and pasting was a bit problematic sometimes from their policy into our new document because formats would change. And so it was just frustrating going back and forth on some of that and took a little bit longer than expected. But here they are. So I will be happy to entertain any questions on this or or comments back on this set of draft policies.
Kevin?
Yes.
Thank you for these. I didn't get a chance to go through every single last one, but I will. These, it occurs to me that these are mostly administrative type policies. You mentioned that you will be adding policies that are specific to us. Would those be more substantive? Because I was hoping at some point we would entertain draft policymaking for some of the issues we're struggling with, like homeless encampments. Or, you know, a good example this morning was the issue of trees. Would we be including material like that?
So, yes, we can certainly always add policies to the district's binder when a need arises. I think the initial first effort, if we can get basically CSDA's package with some of our existing ones that are unique to us already, if we can get that adopted and then we can identify other policies that we need that we may not even have yet. For instance, the tree policy, and we don't have a policy on homelessness or encampments. So we need to develop those. They're not existing. And then we would find a place in the board policies where they would fit. And maybe even add a new section, you know. But the the main push here is to get, you know, 95% of the policies the district needs updated, you know, reviewed and adopted so that we're on, you know, really sound foundation moving forward. Some of our policies now are are very archaic and significantly outdated. And so that's why, you know, efficiency wise, using this TSD policy template gets us well down that road. But yes, Deborah, we would certainly identify those and add them in as the needs arise.
So I guess my my question is more now about process. I understand the need to move forward with what we have here, which is more administrative business practices sort of thing. But in order to do the substantive policies, is this the appropriate time? And what's the process? Does it go to various committees and then to the full board? I mean, what is our policy for creating policy? What is our process?
Yeah, so process wise for this initial go, at least for me, would be to get essentially all the administrative policies, like you see today. There's other policies that are, the financial policies of the district, the operations policies, personnel policies, employee handbook, injury and illness prevention plan. All of those are really packaged nicely right now in the CSDA template. And so the other sections will be forthcoming and then we'll compile all those and potentially adopt. But in this same process, if we identify other policies that need to be added, we can add those in as well. And then how they're developed. And it, literally at the pleasure of the board. If you want to, you know, assign to certain committees to develop policy or the full board, or you want staff to do that and come back. You know, if there's certain policies you have in mind, certainly provide those to you and we could start crafting language on policies and then it can be handled either committee or full board. So I'm I'm open to either one and hadn't put much thought into that process or the process of policy development or the policy on policy development. I hadn't thought about that mainly because, you know, CSD template gets us a long ways down the road. But I'm open to suggestions and at the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, Kevin, I I think I'd like to see this come through legal committee. I mean, I'm with with Deborah. I I've reviewed, but still need more time to sort of digest this. And I think briefing at the legal committee with a recommendation coming out of there makes sense in my mind. And so what I'd like to see if if other people concur with that is that staff make a recommendation to the legal committee and then have an opportunity to discuss in that forum and make a recommendation to the to the board for adoption.
Okay, Nick, if I could add to that real quick, I, is it okay? Because I'd like all of the board to see the policies and maybe get feedback on the next set, the 3,000 and 4,000. So when I come to the legal committee with the full policy manual, I'll have some significant edits already done, potentially. And then we can really focus in on the work with the legal committee. After that, make a recommendation to the full board on a draft set.
Yeah, that's fine.
And you know what? I I don't have to do a, you know, a review and discussion. I can just include the next sections in the general managers' report as draft. And you guys can all have that and then we don't have to have a discussion at the board meeting. But just so everybody has the same information.
Oh, Kevin?
Yes.
I have a question for Scott. On page 110, and I know we'll dive deeper in legal committee. But on page 110, policy 2415.4, at the very bottom, it says, "Members of the board or legislative bodies shall not respond to like, share, retweet, or otherwise participate in any published postings, yada, yada, yada." And I just wanted to Scott to look into this better because, you know, the algorithm for social media is highly impacted by how much activity is on there. And so sometimes trustees will do that to help bolster our numbers. So I just wanted to pick your brain a little bit on what's the best path forward for us.
Thank you. You said 2415.4?
Yes, it's at the very bottom.
Let me let me read in my head for a second to get caught up with where you are.
Let me see if I can highlight it here.
Oh, deals with, okay. So I, my reading of this is, is that what they're really focused on here is the issue of serial meetings. And so by way of example, let's imagine that the gentleman who spoke to the board this morning in public comment posted on Facebook a proposal that Reclamation District 1,000 should be planting trees along canals. And then, Elena, you read the, you read it and liked it and you clicked like. And then Deborah sees your post and clicks like. And then Chris sees Deborah's and clicks like. And then Nick sees Chris's and clicks like. You now have four members of the board that have expressed publicly a position in favor of something that would come back to the board. And that's where it becomes a serial meeting issue. Because if you look at the, what it says in the middle, use any platform to respond to, blog, or engage in serial meetings, or otherwise discuss, deliberate, or express opinions on an issue within subject matter jurisdiction of the board, which could then create a serial meeting by saying what your position is. So my view on this is, is if it's something that the board has already taken a position on, there's no action before the board, your position has already been public, then yes, it would be appropriate for you to be able to comment or blog or post or like. But if it's something that is within the jurisdiction of the board that may come before the board, that's where you start running into problems. And perhaps another example I can think of is the the situation the board dealt with recently with the request in order to have the, in order to have the the city use RD 1,000 property for homeless encampment, right? That issue, if it had been on Jeff Harris's Facebook page, for example, and enough of you weighed in on it, could communicate to the public and it could be a discussion outside of a board meeting. So I would encourage you to think about that phrasing in the context of serial meetings and how to avoid that prohibition of the Brown Act.
And I think maybe, Elena and Scott, this highlighted any, maybe there's some more specific language that could be used there. So for instance, we make a post about our crews doing, you know, a site cleanup, really good work on Steelhead Creek or something like that. Certainly, you know, our crews and others would like to know that the trustees are in favor. If they like that or just reshare some of the positive work we're doing. With that, I don't think that creates a serial meeting. But maybe there's some language where we could define some of that.
Absolutely. I I think when this goes to legal committee, this would be a great conversation to have a little bit more on, under the leadership of the legal committee. And if the trustees are concerned that this comes across as broader than it needs to be, we definitely can narrow it down. But I I read this as being very focused on not violating the Brown Act. And I think there are ways we can be more articulate with trustees more comfortably.
Right, because a lot of our posts actually have, like, Gabe's bio and and introducing some of the field workers and the field crew. And it's not a policy related item.
Agreed. And maybe that's the magic language, the reference, policy related items or items that were, not so much that are, what's the phrasing, subject matter jurisdiction of the board, of the body. It's more about that it's a policy issue that the body would be asked to opine on. So let's flag that and come back to that, Kevin, when it goes through legal committee.
Yeah, so Elena, great comment and discussion there. And these are the things that, you know, there may be members, board members that read through these policies that are on the legal committee that might pick something up like this, like you did. You fortunately are on the legal committee. But this is why I think it's helpful to have, everybody have a draft of it, provide comments to me, you know, and I can work them in. And then at the the legal committee, we can address those things and and really dive into some of these details. So I think that process will work really well. Next month, I'll share sections 3,000 and 4,000 with all of you in the general managers' report. And then if you're so inclined, provide, you know, individually provide comments back to me or edits. And then I'll I'll compile all that and take it to the legal committee, probably in November with a draft. And it may take a little bit of time. The whole document, just the CSDA one, is 275 pages. So I certainly don't want to rush this process at all. There's no urgency to any of this in my mind. And, you know, the board's number one objective is to set policy for the district. So feel free to take as much time as you'd like in this review. Yes, Deborah?
I'm glad to hear that we're not rushing this. But to go back to what I said earlier, there are certain policies and directives that the board should author. And some of those are substantive issues that we have been struggling with for a long time. Two examples are vegetation and trees, as we discussed this morning. I know we have some policies in there regarding maintenance, but homelessness. I would like to see, because I'm, you know, I'm not a lawyer, nor do I play one on TV. Some of my best friends are lawyers. Love you, Nick. But there are some policies that need to be the purview of certain committees. I think the Urbanization Committee should be the place where a draft homelessness policy comes from. Likewise, Operations Committee should be the one to deal with a tree policy. As appropriate for some of the more substantive issues, I think they should go to committee. And committees should take on the initial work of drafting a policy or review by the entire board. That's, that's just my thoughts. I just, I don't want these types of things to get buried under process because we deal with this all the time.
I I would agree with Deborah. I I don't think it's fair for legal committee to shoulder all all this. Because actually, I'd rather approach this like we do the budget because the first half of this document deals with finances. There's portions of social media and community outreach. It probably should go to urbanization. There's the emergency preparedness. It probably should go to operations. And and then any of the other legal stuff, too, I think legal should look at. That's how I would, I would like to approach it because in that way, each committee is, Deborah, so I can do a deeper dive into some of these specific to their their committee jurisdiction. But I, Kevin, like we talked on Sunday, I'd like to see if we have that binder that Christina was putting together on all the board's policies, current policies. That would be very helpful if I can come in and take a look at that and kind of cross match. So I have an idea where the board was in the past and where we might want to go in the future.
Yeah, so. Digitized and shared with the entire board, that would be useful.
Kevin, one of the things that I've seen some other boards do is designate one committee as the initial clearinghouse committee, whether it be legal or executive, whichever it is. And then, much like a legislative process, which I know a number of your board members are familiar with, that committee can can refer out the various policies to the places where they can best be reviewed. But that way, there's, there's an initial place that is where they're all looked at and determined the best place for them to then be looked at, as opposed to having to rely on you as staff to do it. I don't know if if the board liked that, you could designate an executive committee to do that or legal committee to do it. But I do think there is value and it's starting someplace, so there is some consistency in process.
This is Tom, and I have a couple of comments here. Kevin, we, once that binder you were referring to, that of existing policies, that has not been reviewed and we haven't pulled in specific policies that we have to be incorporated in this yet, have we?
No. So the direction that I received from the board, when we talked about that, in the direction I received was to use CSDA's manual. And so that's been my, my work over the last month and a half has been to get CSD manual with our language in it, you know, using their template. The next step would be, once this is done, is for me to go through our administrative policies that we currently have and see how they overlap. But the direction I did receive was to use a CSDA template and not update our existing policies. So essentially, utilize all the legal. So essentially utilize all the legal review that's been done by CSDA and the, the peer review that's been done by CSDA with the intention or feeling that CSDA's policies are newest and best, as compared to our existing policies. But there are specific policies that we do have that we still need to incorporate into CSDA's template. So my process will going to be update CSDA's template, look at our existing policies. Where they're not covered in CSDA's template, feed those in and add our existing. And then we can craft new language or updated language and have legal review on our old policies. So they write it as consistent with today's law, but identify those that are missing from CSDA's template and then fuse those two together to come up with a draft policy book for the board to review.
Okay, so that, that's a critical element, I think, in terms of understanding is, is that, you know, we're taking CSDAs and updating it for our structure. And then we're going to map from our existing policies into where it either is in the CSDA template or where it should be, and we would put it in there. So that we know that our existing adopted board policies have been included in our updated manual. And that process will take place before the final draft comes out to the full board for consideration.
That's right.
Okay, so, so we're not really approving anything other than the process right now. And to the extent, when that goes out to the full board, if a committee member picks out something that they think should be considered at urbanization, they can bring that up. And then if, if it needs to be addressed before we issue the report, the final, we'll do that. But if it, if it's something that can be given some thought and consideration over a period of time, it will be just assigned out to that committee to come back with a recommended change. So, and that would be after we've adopted the, um, draft with incorporation of our existing policies. And I, you know, from a timeline standpoint, if, if we can accomplish this by the first quarter of next year, I think that would be huge.
Yeah, um, and I, I think, Tom, that you may be on to something there is if I compiled the whole thing together. And then if there's certain policies that need further development and want to be referred to a committee, maybe that's the best way, because I, I won't be able to identify which each individual trustee would like to review further in depth at a certain committee.
Right.
You know, I'd just, I'd just be guessing.
Yeah, and, and that, right, let, let the individual board members pick that out or committee chairs. But let's just get it up on the wall with what we, with our current policies with the framework of the CSDMN.
Just to make myself clear, I'm going to try one more time. I'm not suggesting that we not do everything as outlined by Tom and Kevin. There are, however, other policies that we do not have that may take some time to work on, that we could be considering while we move forward with the draft that we're going to approve. Why do we need to wait until that initial book is put together before we start thinking about how we deal with homeless encampments? We, when we deal with this at the board, we don't have a policy we can fall back on. That's why we critically need this, so that we can say, in accordance with state law and RD 1,000 policy, dot, dot, dot. So that's what I'm suggesting. I'm suggesting this morning, for example, my committee, the committee I'm on, with the chair, with the chair of the committee's permission, could start thinking about drafting a district policy for dealing with the unhoused on our property. That is something we consistently come up against. I'm sure my colleagues can think of other things we consistently come up against that we need to address. And we can do that concurrently with putting together our book of administrative policies.
Yeah, that, that's clear, Deborah. And if there's other policies today that you would like to see in the draft of the CSDA manual, so we're taking CSDA manual, existing policies, and if there's new policies that are identified today, such as your suggestion on homelessness, and you want to refer that to urbanization committee, I'll certainly set up a committee meeting to develop that policy. And, you know, as that policy is being developed and until it's developed, you know, included in the, the policy manual, which is not something that we currently have, as well as a tree policy, I can definitely start on urbanization, or excuse me, operations committee on the veg management and tree policy. And so if there, if you've already identified policies that we don't have that we need in here, we'll definitely add that to the list. I'm not opposed to doing that. I just, I, process-wise, initially was given direction, use a CSDA manual. That'll get us most of the way there. And we hadn't talked about development of new policy that wasn't existing. We talked about CSDA merging in our existing policies, but not new policy development. And I have another one, if we're, if we're on this list, we need to talk to, um, whichever committee, but we need to develop a levy setback policy. And so, um, that's long been in the works, you know, prior to me getting here, that had been talked about. And so that's definitely on the list to incorporate. So we can do them concurrently, absolutely can do that. So I'll set up a urbanization committee, uh, to discuss that, um, policy development and also set up an operations for the tree one. And I'm not sure which committee would like to take up setback policy, but certainly open to doing that. Whatever the board wants, uh, I'm happy to do, so.
Could, could, could we get this in a separate, it'd be helpful to be in a separate documents and having to, to keep going into the board packet and, and if that's possible. Because I've got a lot, I have some corrections for you that I'll give you personally, like, but yeah, that'd be very helpful.
Yeah, the more eyes and comments on this, the better. I mean, going through the, I don't know, 75 pages or something already, you just kind of get, yeah, I don't know. You get kind of tired looking at the same stuff over and over. So fresh set of eyes is always helpful, willing to obviously collaborate. These are your policies, not mine.
Yeah, I would just add to the discussion that it seems like on the administrative policies, that, that should be on a separate track. All the, you know, subject matter specific policies that were discussed, seems like those are different animals and should be separated from that, you know, more. I mean, we need administrative policies, those need to be updated. And I, I think we all agree with that, that should move forward. Some of these other policies are not going to move, I think, at the same, uh, same pace or trajectory. You know, obviously some are more controversial than others. And so each one of those should be, I think, treated as standalone, in my opinion. I, I just think otherwise, uh, you know, we're going to drag down adoption of these administrative policies, which again, pretty mundane, banal stuff, but need to be in the, uh, in our, you know, in our policy manual as adopted policies. So those are my two cents.
Thank you, Nick. All right, are we policy out, policyed out?
Is this was a, an information item, correct?
Yeah, it's just for review and discussion, no action necessary. I wanted to get it in your hands. And I actually, um, thank you for the feedback and comments on the process. Um, I think I have a clear, clearer path on how we want to proceed forward. And like I mentioned, um, this is, you know, these are, these are your policies for the district. Um, and I'm not pushing any urgency on this matter, so we can take as long as we need to do it. There are risks in going longer, just in that some of our policies may be outdated and not consistent with law. But, um, the effort would be, you know, acknowledge that there's still some floating risk, but we're okay for now. And then hopefully, as Tom mentioned, maybe we'll target, you know, Q1 of 2022. But, um, yeah, take as long as you guys need on this, and I'm here to, to walk through that process with you.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, um, on to item 6.1, I'm sorry, I should ask, is there any public comment on item 6.1? All right, hearing none. On to 6.2, um, I had sent out an email, um, to all of you individually asking if anyone was interested to be nominated for Sacramento LAFCO for the, uh, there's three offices open, the special district commissioner and two alternate special district commissioners. If anyone wants to be nominated to serve on that board, uh, I just placed it as an action item because that has to have formal board action, um, to nominate from the, the full board or majority of the board, um, to nominate someone. So I know Tom Berandis got back to me, he said he was definitely not interested. So, uh, any other trustees running for Sacramento, uh, LAFCO? All right, we can nominate Jag since he's not here.
We're unanimous.
Give him something else, maybe that'll be more fun than his school board meetings have been lately.
Well, thanks for your.
We won't, we won't do that too. I don't know if you've been tracking the Thomas School Board stuff, but Jag's, Jag's got some interesting stuff going on over there. All right, so hearing no nominations, um, this item is just tabled, not even tabled, just no action taken. So, um, on to committee reports, any questions on the committee reports from August 10th through September 1st? Deborah, I had to get creative on how to figure out that language to make it right, but I think I figured something out.
I just wanted a clarification on the, the, my request for a closed session. Like, I, maybe it wasn't, my request was to have like legal determine whether we needed a closed session, not that I specifically asked for one. I, I wanted, so.
Chris, yeah, we talked about that at executive and we agreed that a closed session is appropriate today. And so I have a brief report to make to you, and I believe executive committee has the recommendation for board consideration. But I appreciate you bringing it up, Chris.
All right, so at this time, um, I'm going to ask all, we'll go into closed session. And so I figured out a way with go-to meeting to do this. So anyone, um, not on the board and not legal counsel, I'll ask that you go ahead and leave the meeting now and give it about five minutes and then you can join back in and you'll be placed in a waiting room. So that when the board's done in a closed session, the, Scott will allow you back into the meeting to finish up for adjournment of the meeting. So I'm going to stay on to make sure Scott's set up until, um, everyone else logs off. I'll make him the organizer, lock the meeting, and then everyone else can wait in the waiting room. Give it about five minutes, um, in case there's any technical difficulties, but you can come back in.
Thank you, Kevin, and don't forget to stop the recording.
I will stop the recording, yep.
This conference will now be recorded.
Excellent, um, so we're back in open session. The board met in closed session and is referring to the personnel committee to, uh, offer a, an extended contract of three years to the general manager. Uh, and for the personnel committee to negotiate that with the general manager and bring back a final agreement to the board for consideration. And that's the report out of the closed session.
Okay, um, those negotiated sessions, uh, Scott, with, um, personnel committee, are those public meetings or, um, private because it's negotiating a, a public contract?
Uh, it's, it's just like a regular board meeting. The meeting is open, but the discussion on the terms is closed.
Okay.
And then the board.
I just want to know how to calendar that, so.
Yep, and then the board will make the final decision in an open session.
And does the personnel committee have a direction? Or will I get direction from you to make any draft changes or any of that? Or you'll share with me if there's something that I'm supposed to prepare for the personnel committee?
Uh, I think the personnel committee will need to meet in closed session to decide amongst themselves whether there are changed terms being proposed. It would be helpful, Kevin, if you could provide, uh, the, a copy of the executed contract to all board members. They could have it. And if the personnel committee, which is chaired by Deborah, is interested, uh, in having me participate in that call, then you can let me know or through Kevin, Deborah, uh, and I, we can schedule it around my availability as well. Just so the, the board and the public are aware, the, it's not permissible for Kevin to sit in the negotiation. That, that has to, Kevin's involvement occurs separate from the closed session. So there, it's often the case that either the chair of the committee or the attorney will go back and forth between the committee and the, the general manager or the employee if there are any issues to be resolved there.
Okay, sounds good.
So, um, Deborah is chair of the, the committee, is there any flavor you want to add to any of that or any direction you want to provide at this time? Okay.
Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm good, thank you, Scott.
Okay, and I think the goal would be to have all of that happen so that the board would be in a position to, to take an action at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, Deborah, I'll work with you to set up a personnel committee meeting in the next week or two. I know your, your availability is on Teams, but if there's anything not in there, you and I will work together, just get that meeting scheduled. And would you like, Scott, to participate in that?
Uh, sure, why not?
Okay. All right, thank you, I appreciate that. And so if there's nothing else to report from closed session, um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. By Joan, second by Abdis. All in favor, we could just raise our hands and say goodbye. Bye.
Bye.
Bye.